Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
We're gonna have kind of like season.
I hope so.
A crazy season.
And it was quite a good season. Flinch, can you see this live? Everybody buy their tomatoes on the way in? Folks, welcome to my second annual town hall meeting. As you can see from our agenda, I'm gonna start things off by thanking a few people. As I did last year, I've got a few apologies, though I'm sure I'll miss a few more. I'm just taking some of my personal goals. I'm gonna review the survey results with comparison to each of the last two years. I'm gonna go over this past year relative to all of our amenities and services leading into 2020. I'm gonna then touch on several of the membership programming changes for 2020, show comparison to our competitive set as it relates to golf amenities, prices, and then including dining. And at the end, I'm gonna open it up to questions, and any questions, I'm gonna turn over to my management team here. Okay, from a thank you standpoint, first, I wanna thank all of you. Your support, your suggestions, observations, feedback, even a few criticisms at times, they really are helpful to me and to our team. I really do my best to listen, and with more than 6,000 members, and that includes spouses, you can imagine the number of emails that I do receive, particularly after one of my letters gets to all of you emailing. I really try to answer everything that comes my way, and if I didn't, believe me, consider it more of an oversight than the fact that I'm ignoring you. I really try to be as transparent and honest as possible with you, even though at times I know it may not always be the answer you wanna hear. But I figure my honesty is probably better than me trying to appease you and blow smoke, you know, just so you can get the answer you wanna hear. Next, our committees. And Dave's got a slide there that'll show the committee structure, the advisory committee, and the committees. We've got three committees: House Committee, Sport Committee, and the Golf Committee. The committees, they really do, they try to guide us, and we take their feedback, and at times, we ask the committee members to go out to their friends, to their acquaintances, the golf partners, to get their input on questions that maybe a particular issue to address. That way, it allows us to make an informed and educated decision. Believe it or not, there are actually times when we get this input, and we will reverse our decisions that were made, or decisions that we're considering, take, in fact, the range ball issue that came up earlier in the year. We've got the advisory committee that is chaired by Barry Barnett. As I said, we've got three committee chairs: Sport Committee Scott Heckinger, Golf Committee Rich Fisk, and the House Committee Sue Thaig. Each of those committees has two other members that are on the advisory committee. Meetings are normally held each month for all of the three committees, and the advisory committee and the executive committee are held in the fall to mating months. Advisory, as you can see there, the executive committee is the three chairs, the advisory chair, and President of the POA, Jerry Igerson. We do post the minutes on the website, and from the committee members on those three committees, we try to use that as our guide for who would be good candidates for our advisory committee going forward. Next, a huge thank you to the Trune associates. During our peak season, we have roughly 300 associates. Finding quality staff is a challenge, to say the least. It is perhaps our greatest challenge, but I feel thankful and fortunate to have the team and the family of staff that we have. They truly do make or break the success of our operations, and they're a huge reason for the positive results on the survey that I'll touch on in a little while. They are what helps to make St. James and the clubs the special place that it is, and their efforts are greatly appreciated. My management team. Guys wanting to stand up. Missing a couple here, but I said it last year, and I'm gonna say it again. I'm so fortunate to have taken on my position with such a professional and qualified management team in place. In the club world, it is not common for a general manager to take a new position and for there to be as little turnover in that management team as we have had here. So I give them tremendous credit for them adapting to my management style over the last couple of years. So those who are up here, Dave Flinch, well, my assistant, he kinda guides me in any issue, he can provide like pages of background on it because he's been here for 14 years. Dustin Strickland, our Director of Agronomy. How about the undertaking he's had since he got here? When both of us signed on for our positions, nobody told us what we were headed for. Director of Golf, KJ, Dave Keough. Director of Food and Beverage, Lindsay Kraus, she's been here for 11 years. Executive Chef, that's really kinda being one new hire replacing somebody on the management team before. And our Executive Chef, Keith Holberreit, he arrived here in April. Our Controller Cindy Weaver, she's been here 80 years. And our Membership Director is Becky Jones, who's been here 25 years. And San Tel, KJ, who arrived here last year too. Thank you all. Made it easy, made life a lot easier. Trune Corporate. Trune is the largest management company for clubs for a good reason. They really are that good. The support, the expertise, the resources that they have really make a difference in our ability to do our jobs. We wouldn't be able to do all that without all of them, not to mention the financial resources since they purchased the clubs that they provide for us. Trune's Executive Vice President, Blue's Bruce Glasco. He helped orchestrate the purchase back in early 2018. He's my boss. He provides tremendous support for me. During the past year, on multiple occasions, we have reached out to Trune Corporate and called upon their specialists in agronomy, course design, finance, insurance. Insurance, I mean, there was a stretch here where I was talking to him on every day. IT, food and beverage, membership and marketing, interior design, they are really helpful to us. Okay, onto my apologies. It wasn't as bad this year, but yes, another hurricane. Been here two years, two hurricanes. Thankfully, this year's was not nearly as damaging as Florence, and the three-to-four-day shutdown that we did have was probably more related to just being prepared and precautionary. Yeah, I'll take the blame for it. Not knowing everybody's name, this one's a hard one. If I still don't know your name, don't take it personal. With so many members, it really is a work in progress, and I'm getting better, but I often feel badly because all of you seem to know my name, and I don't. You know, by wearing the suit jacket and tie, it's easy for you to recognize me. You know, I mean, if I dressed in golf, most people would never really know who I am out there, right? Last, the Eagles. Is it a great to listen to Eagles fight songs so early in the morning? All right, that's enough. So anyway, you know, last year, I apologized to the Giants fans. This year, I've gotta say I'm sorry because karma comes back to you, right? I mean, my Eagles are 4-4, and I think we're getting better. I think we're gonna be okay. All right, onto the real stuff. Our goals. My goals really aren't that much different than when I stood up in front of you a year ago. I do my best to provide good communication to you with complete honesty and transparency. I touched on that earlier. I try to do this through my regular emails to you. You know, you figure, I try to send an email about once a month. You know, when I feel as though there is enough material to get to all of you, then, you know, I know that's about the time to send an email, and it turns out, usually about once a month. We do a weekly email for pretty much each of the departments. One goes out: fitness, F&amp;B, events, golf, and Texas, tennis, and racket sports. I try to stay as visible as I can, trying to attend different events, club events, member events. I've even tried to hit nine holes in occasionally just so that I can experience the same frustrations that you do out there. And KJ and Flinch, they will both testify that I've shared that frustration. I try to create a positive atmosphere among our associates, feeling as though it all starts with me, and it should, and it filters down to all of them. This week, right now, we have our Associate Appreciation Week. Tomorrow, we've got our full associate meetings, two of them, to announce Associate of the Quarter awards. And at the end of this week, we've got an event off-site to show our appreciation to all of them with a movie in Middleton Park, and the barbecue, and the games, and the fun for families. One of management's goals is to build a winning team and to create that growth potential within the staff that we have, whether it be within Trune, you know, whether it be within the clubs, or even on, you know, a grander scale with Trune Corporate. This past year, one of our huge goals was the bunker project, the greens over Reserve, and getting that completed on time, which we did. July 31st, we reopened our 81 holes. Thank you, Dustin, and superintendents here. Another goal is improving food and beverage. You'll see from survey results, you know, sort of a little bit mixed on that one. We've made some good strides in some areas, and, you know, consistency remains one of our big challenges. Lastly, working closely with the POA, you know, Jerry Igerson, the town, to provide the best experience possible for the members and residents within the community. Jerry Igerson is President of the POA, Mayor Gene Tomer, Dan Kingsbury, who represents the developer, they've been great to work with, and we try to get together, you know, on a monthly basis, sorry I missed the last meeting, to keep each other updated on what's going on in all of our laws. Okay, action items for 2019 from the 2018 survey. First, dress code. Now, I'm gonna touch on this one a little bit later because we know the dress code question that was in the survey, but this was a topic among all three committees, and you will see an email letter go out towards the end of the year, which we, you know, each of the committees try to be as consistent as possible in dress code and what is appropriate in their respective areas. Non-member use. We addressed this. Working to be more attentive, more vigilant, in trying to prevent non-member usage of the amenities. On the golf side, we've had the pros become more visible, walk in the driving ranges, trying to introduce themselves as a way also to determine whether those on the driving ranges are eligible golf members or not. We put in key card access over the Members Athletic Club to prevent non-members from using the facilities. Seaside pool probably remains somewhat of a challenge just because there's four entrances. I think we've gotten better. We increased the number of monitors over there to try to check. You know, that's still probably a little work in progress to be even better, and we'll work on that when going into 2020. We increased the days' hours of operation over at Seaside Grill. Pickleball, one of the huge goals, was really getting this going. We have, you know, as I said last year, we identified the spot. We're now in the process of clearing the land. We've gone through all sorts of hurdles with permitting. Tomorrow, there is a meeting between our engineer and the state to get the approvals for the land, stormwater permit approvals, and to set up a site visit, which should be our last purr. Once that's done, and we've already started clearing the land, construction will begin. We're looking at probably, you know, kind of a four-to-five-month process to get that complete, and I'll touch on this one and that one a little bit later too. Social and sport members, last year, we limited the number, or we reduced the number of allowable rounds for social and sport to 12 and 30, but we also, in the mid-year, listened to some of the comments coming our way, and we made some changes to allow them to call day before or day of to make a tee time, and it would not count against their allowable We finished all 81 holes. Bunker project and aggressive introduction, you know, installation of the Bermuda grass at Reserve. We introduced Open Table, our reservation system for dining, earlier in the year, so that now you can make a reservation at any of the four clubhouse restaurants. With that, we also improved our mobile app, so you can use your mobile devices, your phone, to make the reservations. Earlier in the year, for the golfers, you know some of the nightmares we had with our golf carts. So about halfway through the year, we changed them out. Trune was able to negotiate with the club car, so half of our fleet got replaced. That has been a tremendous help. The other half will get replaced in the early 2020. All pool furniture accessories, they were placed at players at Founder's Pool. That made a huge positive difference. We have a new shade structure being constructed at Founder's Tennis Courts. Still, it's been a lot. It has, we have had one hurdle after another. I don't wanna share all the gory details, but it has not been easy from the start. From Flinch handing a check to the people who were building it back in February, and the check was in Flinch's room that caught on fire. So it all started back then. There were like burn marks on the check as he was handing it. And lastly, as I speak, we've got new cardio equipment and strength training equipment being installed over at the Members Athletic Center, and that's a big deal. That's a good one. All right, survey results. Hard to believe, but this year, we had returned 2,455 surveys. That is a huge number. When you take a look there, you see that represents 35% more than last year, now more than 600 more. The year before, there were like 1,100, but as Flinch reminded me, that would be sent to a household, so I know that didn't go over real well. But anyways, so we went from like 1,100 surveys two years ago to more than 2,400 this year. That is terrific. What that means to me is all of you care, and you're willing more than willing to share your thoughts on everything club-related. I appreciate Dave's work, as he's been going through all of the comments, so that we can arrange them in such a way that summarize them to give them to the department heads with action items for the coming year. As in the past, resident members represented about 90% of the survey's return, golf members that were support members. The key metric that we look at is the MPS score, and this year's MPS was roughly the same as last year. 41 this year, 42 last year. Good news is, two years ago, it was 16, so still a tremendous jump in satisfaction. When drilling down more closely by department, golf course conditions, golf operations, both rated very high with a strong improvement to last year. Players continue to stay as the highest rated, and Reserve saw the greatest improvement. Food and beverage, it roughly stayed the same. I look at it, we had quite a few comments about Founder's Club and the other clubs and restaurants, they tended to improve a little bit. Founder's went down. We kinda heard that even before the survey went out, and a new menu has just been introduced over at Founder's that began yesterday, so we're looking to make the positive changes over at Founder's now too. But with food and beverage, and I'll always sit here and tell you, it is a work in progress, it is a challenge. Consistency always remains the biggest challenge for that soon, and that is really what we work hard to achieve. Dress code. The results show that the membership is really pretty split on allowing denim versus not allowing denim. It was a 55% in favor of making a change, but I'll be honest with you, with it that close, I'm not willing to make a change. The stronger comments tended to be from those opposed to making a change. When you look at it, we do have five restaurants, six if you include Seaside, but we've got five restaurants. Three of them allow denim, two of them do not, one of them is open seven days a week. So at this point, we will not be making a change there. All right, onto our amenities, starting with golf courses. As I mentioned earlier, we replaced the greens at Reserve from Betraft to Bermuda, which is consistent with what we have at the other three golf courses. We have been extremely pleased with the way it has grown in. They are, the greens are not as firm as what we thought they might be, so they're holding the approach shots better. The speed of the greens, we got up to somewhere in the, what, 12 range? 11? 11 for member gas. That will kinda get slower again now with the winter approaching, but we were real pleased with the way the greens grew in. We bought covers for all the Reserve greens, so we now have covers for all 81 holes. Hopefully, we don't have to use them. Last year, we were fortunate, only needed them once, and that wound up probably more precautionary. Our eight-and-a-half-month bunker project was completed at the end of July, and again, hats off to Dustin and his team for managing the project, and again, the early returns have been very positive. During the project, we also improved drainage, site lines, and tee boxes. Needless to say, it is a wonderful thing to have 81 holes open again. As you're well aware, Hurricane Florence took quite the toll on our tree population, particularly at Members Club. If you drive around Members, it is pretty noticeable, the number of trees that have been taken down. I'm sure Dustin can give you a more exact number, but it's safe to say it's in excess of 2,000 trees around the club set that have taken down. Got an indirect hit tied to the hurricane was the infestation of beetles. Two different beetles, and we drove around and saw the damage and what is happening with the trees, and that was kind of our last tree takedown that was the result of the beetles. We don't expect more tree takedowns than what we have, so we will be doing another spray of the insecticides in December, January. Last year, largely due to the hurricane, we did not overseed, and I know this one created a little bit of debate. We were real pleased with the results that we saw last year in the, and again, I'll call them off months, I'll call them kind of the three-to-four December-through-March timeframe, but we really do feel strongly that this decision is in the best interest of the members, and we will not be overseeding again, and I put that out in the emails to you. We're confident that we will be able to manage this offseason well and provide good conditions with, you know, the technology, the pigments and the paints and the spraying that the golf course maintenance team will be doing. Not overseeding has also played a big role in the conditions that we have now, or that we've had as we head into this offseason. The live grass, when it's there, really does impinge on the ability for the Bermuda to grow, and with it not there, it really allows the Bermuda to become just healthier and grow in better. One of the other benefits of not overseeding is it does allow Dustin and his team to refocus their attention on a lot of the detail work around. One of our plans for 2020 is to increase the number of course maintenance days. This will begin in the month of April, after the daylight savings time change, and what this will entail is closing each course two days per month to allow the golf course maintenance team to focus on the detail work. We will also be extending the aerification days to four per course, so what this means when it's all said and done is there will be about 76 days where a course will be closed. One note to be aware of is the overseed or not overseed decision, it was not made in the interest of saving money. A lot of the money that was not being spent on overseed is being spent on other things. We went through our budget process a few weeks ago, and Dustin could not have been happier as he walked out of the meeting with a couple hundred thousand more dollars to spend and use to make the golf courses better. In addition, approvals made for a number of pieces of equipment, you know, totally more than a million dollars for the golf course maintenance team, which again, is replacing some of the old equipment with new, and that all helps. Golf operations. First, a congratulations to our 2019 men's and women's champions, Prince Chapman, Barbara Sauter. I can't go without congratulating Mr. Dewey either. He had two hole-in-ones like in the last two weeks. I don't know if I've gotten close to any, and then, how's he getting two after he's 80? Should I announce that too? From a staffing point, one of our best moves since past year was promotion of Alan Hilton to the Head Golf Professional over at Campus. He does an awesome job. He was actually recognized as our Manager of the Year for 2019, 2018 at last year's Holiday Party. Again, this year, we had a tournament to commemorate the opening of golf courses, all right? So it was the opening of our 81 holes. So we had it at the Reserve Club, and as we did last year, the winning team was rewarded with a trip to the Trune Cup at Indian Wells in December. We have one more tournament this season with the Nicholas Cup happening on November 9th, and with its completion, we will be able to announce the winners of the 2020 ninth, and with its completion, we will be able to announce the winners of the 2019 Player of the Year from men's women's. One of the more controversial topics this year was the eighty-five rule, and there's like two eighty-five rules, so I'm not, I'll, I'll go through both of them. One was the eighty-five rule having to do with handicap posting, and that was through the handicap committee, which increased from the requirement of seventy percent of your scores to be posted to eighty-five percent of the scores in order to be eligible to play in the tournaments. There was a little, they're pushed back early from a few, but I think, pretty quick, everybody got on that same page, and there really are not many who are not needing that, that posting for tournaments. And, uh, you know, between Keith Lee as chair of the handicap committee, working with our staff, Robert Stark, he's been, uh, working closely and making sure all of the scores are in and the percentages are there as they review it. All right, the other eighty-five rule had to do with which tees you play from, green or white for the men, and it was a combination of age, all right? No, younger than seventy with a handicap plus your age totaling eighty-five. It'd be total eighty-five that gave you the ability to play in the green tees. I'm going to touch on kind of how that is going to be addressed in 2020 in, in just a moment. Uh, I mentioned earlier about the social and sport with the allowable rounds and how that works. And lastly, want to recognize our assistant pro over at Founders Club for the charitable work that he did in raising about ten thousand dollars for the Full of Honor program with his hundred-hole event at Founders, uh, early last month. All right, so 2020 golf operations. There's a big change coming our way in the way handicaps are, are being done. Currently, we have net golf, and that is changing to the World Golf Handicap System. What we are doing in 2020 is signing on with Carolina Golf, Carolina Golf Association. Carolina Golf Association will give us the ability to go with gin, which many of you may have been familiar with prior to coming here. So with the gin handicapping system, what that's going to do, along with being a part of Carolina Golf, is they are going to be coming here and rerating all of our holes. By rerating all of our holes, before they get here, we are going to complete all of the tee boxes, okay? So all of the red tee boxes where you see plates in the fairways are going to be completed. We have Ron DeSpain, who is Trune's golf course design specialist, coming out. He is going to take a look at the work that has already been compiled, and Keith Lee put a lot of time into it, but that work is going to be handed over to, uh, Trune corporate so that he can come up, we can come up with six different tee boxes. Roughly, I don't know, four hundred yard, four to five hundred yard differences between each of them. That will allow us to eliminate the eighty-five, because the assumption is, when we're rerating, all that handicapping will be correct. It will not happen until May first, which will be off the start of our tournament season. The only tournament that will be impacted with that one on the men's side is the match play tournament, and match play tournament will get pushed later in the year. Did I cover everything? Oh, I did not cover one thing, see, the most important thing. With the handicap, with, going with Carolina Golf and the gin handicapping system, there will be a twenty-dollar per person fee per year for the, for those who want their handicaps captured. And that'll, that'll be built out sometime in March, April, of, of match season. We are coming up with another, uh, looking at ideas for another tournament next year that will help to determine a, uh, who, what foursome would go to the Trune Cup. One of the ideas that we've touched on, but we are far from, uh, finalizing that idea, is perhaps a neighborhood cup, something where, you know, we have some fifty-four neighborhoods within, is that the right number, somewhere closer? Fifty-something neighborhoods within the plantation, maybe trying to take a foursome from each neighborhood, and, you know, we may have a few points on our hands within the neighborhoods to figure out who that foursome might be, but maybe again, we're, we're starting that process, trying to figure out, uh, a fun tournament to, uh, come up with who would, uh, who would play in the Trune Cup next year. MGA and LGA, the one change we're looking at next year is to have them at different golf courses, um, each month. So MGA would be at one golf course in that given month, LGA would be at a different golf course in that month. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the remaining half of the cart fleet will be replaced in early 2020, and one of the things we are looking at is the possibility of an indoor learning center. So we are getting some quotes on that, and we'll be looking at it more closely too, um, with PGA Show in, in January. Golf round comparison. Currently, we are tracking to finish the year close to our previous high-end rounds play, which was the one seventy-seven, five ninety-four in seventeen. That's a big number, particularly when you consider the, uh, the fact that we had ninety-eighteen holes out of play for the first seven months. As in the past, you can see that roughly ninety percent of our rounds are golf member rounds. We made that much more of an effort early in the year too, especially during, you know, during those first seven months, to limit any guest play so that we could focus on the number of players. All right, food and beverage operations. I mentioned earlier, our biggest change on the staffing side was hiring our executive chef, Peter Holgerite. He has transitioned in well, and I'm real pleased with his first six months here. We've also had some changes to four of our five restaurant chefs. Earlier in the year, Anthony Weiss was promoted from the sous chef at Players Club to our chef, head chef at Founders Club. Just in the last couple of months, we promoted Chef Brandon Mickey, who was the chef at Members Club, to be the chef at Reserve Club. That's a big deal. Reserve Club is another restaurant where we have seen some challenges in consistency, both food and service. I think moving Brandon to Reserve will be a huge boost for that restaurant. He has done an awesome job in impressing with Beer Club dinners. I've said the Beer Club dinners, in my opinion, are one of the best menus, creative menus that we have, um, within the clubs, and I know he is looking to take that creativity over to Reserve. And again, he is a known quantity, particularly not only at Members Club, but with all the banquets that happen over at Members Club, all the neighborhood groups, so we moved him to Reserve. He follows Gary, who is the restaurant manager over there. I think the two of them will make a really good team over there. At Members to replace Brandon, we hired Jason Calvin, who had, did a great job with his first Beer Club dinner with some help from Brandon. So he has worked, uh, well in transitioning in there, and the sous chef over at Members, who worked under Brandon, has been a big help over there, and he's staying there, and playing us for him to stay there, that's Mahalo. Uh, lastly, we are in the process of finalizing a new chef over at Tommy's, and I expect that to happen within the next couple of days or that close. Uh, so we're excited, we'll be excited about that, introducing a new menu over there also. With that, I can't forget our most consistent restaurant, which is Players. The one restaurant where there hasn't been a change in chef, and there hasn't been a change in chef over there for seven, eight years, and Augusto does an awesome job over there, and a reason for their consistency is Augusto and the team over there. This year, we signed on with Open Table, which allows you to make reservations online. We do continue to hear, and I saw right up last night in one of our end-of-days, that not all the members are familiar with the fact that they can make reservations online. Again, on the one hand, I'm always going to tell you, we will take walk-ins, but at the same time, if you know you're coming, I'm strongly encouraged to make the reservation. It ensures that we're going to have a table for you. It also helps us in our own preparation for both staff and preparation at the kitchen. With the Open Table, as I mentioned before, you can now go online on your phones to make your reservations, and we've seen, we, we have seen a definite jump in the number of people making reservations, but there are still some out there that, uh, saying, oh, I didn't know you could make a reservation. This past year, we started the process of finding a food truck. This process will be completed so that we have it going into next season. We had Trune's F and B specialists here with us last week, helping to finalize those plans from the design of the truck. We're finalizing the name, the menu itself, and as we get the final plans with all that, I will report back to you. Plan is for the food truck to largely be used at, you know, I'll say the pools, Founders Pool, Players Pool. We, we are talking about perhaps for a neighborhood event, uh, you know, on the banquet side, and we haven't gone there yet, but another possibility perhaps is, um, Seaside at the Beach. But that takes permitting and all that, and we haven't gotten there for, but, but that's on our mind also. This past year, we hosted, and it was a goal going in, to have more member events or, or more of a variety of member events. So we still have some of the traditional, we've got our main event, Lobster Night, which is coming up in the next, in the next month. We've had trivia nights, karaoke nights, Italian nights. Even this past Saturday, we did a, you know, we've done our NFL football games. On Sundays at Founders, we did a college football game this past Saturday, much to the delight of the Ohio State fans, because today should win over the Wisconsin fans. Challenges, I talked, consistency is our biggest challenge on the food and beverage side. Our other challenge is really trying to regain some of that popularity over at Founders, so again, I'm hoping that the change in menu is going, going to help with that. Uh, summer social events, you can see, we did the Beer and Shrimp Festival, monthly poolside concert series, live entertainment on Wednesdays, Friday night float night, but this was the first year that we had it every, well, virtually every Friday, perhaps with the exception of a couple of holiday weekends, um, and it was a huge day. And the last splash karaoke. We are currently preparing for a busy fall season. We've got the main event on November fifteenth, with, you know, Lobster Night. We have a chef's table event featuring Chef Peter on November twentieth, and of course, we've got Thanksgiving, which you have three options with Thanksgiving. One is a menu, dinner menu at Players Club. One is takeout at Reserve, and the last is delivery. Flitch, next slide. Who wouldn't want these two handsome guys delivering your turkey?
I'll drive the car.
Flitch, I had no idea this slide was there. Kim somehow slipped it in.
Remember that on evaluation. I think Lindsay was the culprit.
Lindsay was the culprit. Um, and it's not too early to start thinking about New Year's Eve. New Year's Eve, we have the, uh, three of the four clubhouses open with different formats for that night. So in 2020, I talked about staffing a little bit. Again, we look to supplement our current staff with the internationals. We had twelve of them this past year, they are a huge help to our crew. We have six front-of-the-house servers, six back-of-the-house coaches. Huge help to us. We're also looking to incorporate some university hospitality program interns. Again, we hope to incorporate a new mix, some new ideas into the social programming. The Wine Club will be returning in 2020. You should be getting an email on that in the next week. Uh, it will be a yearly program as we had in the past. Talked about the food truck and making that happen. We will be replacing chairs in the Reserve Club sunroom, so you're not sitting like so low in the chair. Uh, also, from a staffing standpoint, with the increase of business that we've had in the past year, we will be hiring a second assistant food and beverage director. And their focus will largely be on training, on training in front of us. Okay, racket sports. On a sad note, we are losing Rob Currier, or we have lost Rob Currier, the assistant, uh, Brian's first assistant. Rob was awesome. He got married. His wife is in Durham, has a long commute, probably not the best for a relationship. So Rob has gone to Durham. We are in the process of finding a replacement, hoping to have that finalized in the next several weeks, I'll say. Greg Leimer, in the meantime, has been promoted to first assistant, and Greg is also our lead pickleball instructor. He received, he received his certification in pickleball instruction earlier in the year, and he is now, similar to tennis, where you evaluate and, and you come up with, um, your rating of three-point-os, three-point-five, four-point-os. Doing the same with pickleballs, the Pickleball Association is forming, and they are, um, playing in outside tournaments against other, other clubs and organizations. So that is happening. I'm a little afraid, pickleball's another thing that I get out there and share the same frustration as the pickleball members, and one thing I don't want is Greg evaluating me right now. The club's hosted four doubles nights, four pro doubles nights with regional pros competing in an exhibition format for the membership enjoyment. First three were at Seaside when the grill was open over there, most recent was at Founders this past Friday, and it worked real well at Founders. We, we had pizzas and we had bar, we had server in the area, and, um, it, it was very well received, and we're talking about how to structure next year, and we were, we're looking perhaps at doing one every other month, maybe having two at Founders on either end, and then two at Seaside. We had talked about the shade structure earlier. I do anticipate it to be done. My goal is to have that done before the, the tennis, uh, annual meeting. But I also scheduled my vacation around that tennis annual meeting, so if it's not done, then Flitch could be there. As mentioned earlier, we talked about pickleball. Our goal with the pickleball is to be ready for next season. As I said, it takes four, five months to complete, but we anticipate the final approvals happening in the next, uh, I'd say the next month. We do have a layout of the pickleball courts, and we are working closely with Scott Hettenger and, uh, some of the pickleball representatives to make sure not only does that work, but the, uh, the courts themselves and the construction of the courts, how all that is, uh, we're working with them to make sure it's within their approval. For next year, Players Club tennis courts are scheduled to be laser graded. This past year, Seaside courts were laser graded. Similar to the SJTA, a pickleball association is being, has been created. They already have somewhere close to three hundred members, and so we'll be assisting them, as we do with SJTA, on, uh, organizing Players events. We're talking about finding the good replacement, replacement for Rob. We are also looking at replacing the lighting at Founders with LED lights. And as I said, we are going to have shade sales in 2020. Fitness and wellness. The most exciting news I've got there is the fact that we do have the cardio and strength training all being installed right now at the MAC. We have over seventy-five... We have over 75 different classes currently between the MAC and Signature Wellness. With our improved app, members can make reservations for these classes online. So if you're not aware of that, talk to Sean, talk to Heather, and they will help work you through it. If you're not, if you have issues with figuring out the app, Kim Adams, who is recording this session, is our director of communications, and she will be more than happy to help you We changed our opening time from 6:00 AM to 5:30 at the MAC. And as I mentioned earlier too, we have made it card entry access at the MAC now. All three outdoor pools have furniture added. And this past year, we increased the hours and the staffing for pool monitors at Seaside along with towel service. As I look to 2020, the dehumidifier at the MAC will need to be replaced. We will also be replacing those doors that lead in. There's, I think, four sets of doors that are old and they get rusty every time, you know, within weeks after we paint them. So those are getting replaced along with some of the windows. Swimming pools, we are going to be moving, and the outdoor shower off of the deck will allow for better drainage. And again, we have budgeted for more hours for the pool monitors so that we can be that much more attentive to members coming in and members following the rules of the pool. Couple of things that are being discussed at the committee level, sport committee level, is looking for perhaps one of the outdoor pools to be adult only and one of the pools to allow floats. So again, this is, that's one where I asked the sport committee to go out and talk to friends and those that they know that use the pools to see if that's something that's worth doing. Last thing is we're considering a shade structure, and I know that those are like bad words right now, but we are considering a shade structure over the staging area over at Seaside Pool. Membership. We have some stats through September 30th. 163 new memberships against 120 resignations, so plus 43. We have seen 84 non-residents become residents during the last year. We continue to host new member receptions. We had one last week with about 25 couples attending. We are working hard to create a more comprehensive welcome and orientation package for new members. Two weeks ago, we had Member Appreciation Week. Each day of the week, well, say Monday through Thursday, a different amenity was featured. With golf, we had Demo Day and sales in the pro shop. With the food and beverage, we had live lobsters for sale along with sharpening of knives. We did massages for fitness and, what am I missing? Racket, racket tennis, we had clinics there. For Relay of Life charity, Chantel has been our liaison, working closely with the, with that group and the different fundraisers they have during the course of the year. Membership stats, again, we've seen an increase, 30 in golf, 50 in sport, slight decrease in social, but a bigger decrease in house members. And the house members is more of an aging owl than anything else with that decrease. Resident members now represent 73% of our total members compared to 70% a year ago. Member homes represent roughly 75% of all resident homes. Last thing, we grew about 1% in our total membership, new members. So for 20, for 2020, some projections per the developer, they anticipate approximately 300 resales, and there will be another 40 through outside realtors. Currently, there are about 800 homes without St. James memberships. Again, translated to about 75% have memberships. One of the projects we're working on currently is a kind of rebranding new logo, and I'll report back to you on that as we make more progress, working with corporate on that design. Clubhouse renovations. A while ago, we finished Founders, and it took a while. It was not the way we drew it up. For all of the HVAC, we did the exterior painting, we finished the railing on the deck. We still have three to go, and a lot of that is some of the work I'm doing back and forth with insurance as we try to figure out which one's next, likelihood is, we're talking about players in reserve next, with members being last. Members requires the most amount of work, it is the oldest of the three remaining, and our goal would be really, for as long as it took at Founders, the goal and what we talked with contractors about is making this, each of those two players in reserve happen within about two week timeframe. Hope to know more on that soon, but I've been saying that soon for the last couple of months. All right, 2020 Membership Programming Updates. Effective January 1, pretty much all three categories are going to be right around 3%. Golf dues, I'm sorry, golf membership will increase by slightly less than 3%. Sport dues will increase by slightly more than 3%. Social dues will increase by right around that 3% number. The biggest difference is the senior category, and the senior category is more than the 3%, but it is the last big jump for seniors because it gets seniors to the stated 75% of the golf members. On the golf side, nothing will change as far as sport and social members to the 12 and 30 rounds that we had in place and their ability to make tee times day before or day of. Annual cart plan is going to increase by $10 per month for a family, $5 per month for single golf members. Daily cart fees will increase by $1, 26 for signature golf, 28 for the other categories, noting that this is the first increase on the daily cart fees since 2014. Food and beverage, don't change. The minimum will stay at the 800 that we changed last year. As we look at our competitive set, each year, we look at the dues and the fee structure relative to some of the club operations that are closer to us in location and those that offer somewhat similar amenities. What you see from this is that the value for the dues dollar here is really pretty good. It's really very good for what you get, including the food and beverage. We also put together a comparison looking at some of the outside restaurants, and with that, keeping in mind that signature members, the signature members represent 90% of our members. For signature members, there's an automatic 10% off of the price. When you take that into account, the prices are as good, if not better, for your protein entrees on the menu. And one of the things that, you know, with our restaurants, you will see is a tendency to change our menus more often than some of the outside restaurants. Again, looking at all this, I really do contend that for what the membership pays, it really is a pretty good deal. Additional benefits, the True Purvey Program, happy to say that about 43% of our members took advantage of the True Purvey Program, the eligible members. Love to see that grow. One thing we do see is our members take advantage of the True Purvey Program far more than outsiders coming here, which, again, that's the way it should be for us. I'd love to see all of our members take advantage of some of the golf courses that Truun manages and play there for the discounted rates that they offer. With that, I open up for questions.